We'll call the meeting to order. Rice for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason, justice for all.
Amy, roll call please.
Sure. Councilmember Chambers?
I'm here.
Councilmember Salasweedle?
Here.
Councilmember Barkis?
Here.
Mayor DeVore?
Here.
And Councilmember Ritzma is absent.
Motion to approve Mark's absence.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please excuse. Motion for tonight's consent agenda. Did everybody get their closed session minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll support.
Any discussion or changes? Amy?
Councilmember Ritzma is absent. Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Councilmembers Chambers?
Yes.
Nothing under old business. New business. Number A, engineer of record. Mike?
Good evening. On September 22nd, the city accepted requests for qualifications for an engineer of record. The city received proposals from seven engineering firms. A committee consisting of Councilman Barkis, Rich LaBomber, Ralph Brecken, Brian Van Veelen, and Brian Vandermeulen reviewed and interviewed all of the firms. Each firm participated in an initial round of thorough interviews. From this first phase, we narrowed the list to four firms. C2AE, Orchard Hilton, McLimate, OHM, Row Engineering, in conjunction with Jones Henry, and Williamson Works. The firms were then given take-home questions regarding engineering processes and hypothetical situations, some of which we've encountered. They also participated in second-round interviews. It was our intent to conduct a thorough and rigorous process to select the firm we felt was best suited for the city moving forward. Two full days were dedicated to interviews followed by a meeting a week and a half later to review the take-home responses and select a firm. Through this process, we determined that all four firms were capable of serving the city. However, the committee unanimously agreed that Row Engineering and Jones Henry were best suited to meet the city's needs going forward. Jones Henry will contract with Row and bring extensive experience in overseeing the construction of water and wastewater facilities, which include their experience with line softening facilities and numerous projects throughout the Midwest. Their offices are located in Kalamazoo, while Row's main office is in Flint, with an additional office in Grand Rapids. Our project manager, who's here tonight from Row, is Jeff Markstrom. He'll come up in a few minutes. He's going to be assisted by Matthew Mottz and Robert Church as staff engineers. Aaron Davenport will serve as our point of contact from Jones Henry. As a disclosure, Jeff and I worked together over 15 years ago when Row represented local development financing theory. Row is a large, well-respected engineering firm that focuses primarily on municipal and other governmental clients. They have their own surveying and construction inspection staff. During the interview process, Row disclosed their involvement in the Flint water crisis and noted that they agreed to a settlement related to that matter. It is important to emphasize that Row had no role in the neglect or malfeasance conducted by the state of Michigan. Their involvement stemmed from their work with the Karragani Water Authority, which was in the process of designing a new water system from Lake Huron to serve communities along the I-69 corridor, including Flint, which planted to connect from the city of Detroit's water supply. This crisis occurred when the state disconnected Flint from Detroit's system and began treating water from the Flint River without proper corrosion control measures while awaiting completion of the Karragani project. Row served as a contractor to the Karragani Water Authority, not to the city of Flint. Because of the scope of the litigation, any entity connected to the state of Michigan, the city of Flint, or Karragani was named as a party in several lawsuits. The selection committee had extensive discussions throughout this process. While I technically make the recommendation to city council, this decision represents a collective conclusion from all members of the committee. Together, we determined that Row Engineering and Jones Henry is the best fit for the city of Lowell going forward. This recommendation reflects the consensus of the entire group, not solely of myself. Some projects currently in design will continue under Williamson Works. Rich and I are reviewing those projects, and I do want to personally thank Williamson Works for their service to the city of Lowell. They will continue to serve as our city planner. I recommend for the Lowell City Council to retain Row Engineering as our engineer of record. Jeff, could you come up and just talk about your firm today a little bit? Jeff?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I am Jeff Markstrom from Row Professional Services Company. Mike knew us as Row Engineering back in the day. Everyone still knows us as that, so we go by both names. I've been with Row for 18 years. I'm an owner, ownership of Row. We're a 250, 270-person firm, mostly based in Michigan. We have one office down in South Carolina. But all the rest of our offices are here in Michigan. As Mike mentioned, we are mainly a municipal engineering firm. We work a lot in cities, townships, and villages across the state of Michigan. We work for DOT, we work for Row Commissions. We do do some private work, but that's not one of our major emphasis of our revenue stream. With me tonight, I actually have, on the far left of there, is Matt Moats. Matt, as mentioned, will be our lead engineer on a lot of the design projects we do. Matt works in our Grand Rapids office. Matt and I worked together quite a bit recently on a lot of local community projects. The guy in the middle in the blue shirt, that's Nate Whitting. Mike, you hadn't met him yet. He was in our proposal. Mike is one of our up-and-coming construction services guys. He's been running a lot of our municipal construction services projects. Mike Roberts, who was at our second interview, Mike could not make it tonight, so Nate Whitting wanted to bring him here to introduce you. And then the gentleman there in the right is Aaron Davenport from Jones and Henry. So, as mentioned, Jones and Henry is our partner on this, working for you guys. Row does not do treatment. We know that. We knew that going in. We knew that you guys had some water and wastewater treatment plant projects coming up. And Aaron and I worked together 20 years ago at the same firm. And when we saw this, I reached out to Mike and said, or Aaron, I said, "This would be a perfect opportunity for us to team together." So, we're happy to have Jones and Henry on our team, and we're very happy to be selected as your engineer of record. You guys went through a very rigorous process. We appreciate everything you guys did, and hopefully we can do a great job moving forward.
As an aside, Aaron was the person who gave us our award when we got the best taste in water. Which time? Well, maybe you want to explain what happened this time.
Let's do that maybe after.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Eric, anything from your perspective on the committee?
Your team did an outstanding job, first rate. You partnering with Jones and Henry, Aaron, your water experience, and Row having just, your credentials were impeccable. You were a clear leader, so glad you're on board.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? With that, then I will look for a motion to approve Row as our engineer of record.
I'll make that motion to approve Row Engineering as our engineer of record.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Amy?
Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
No.
And Ritzma is absent.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess Charlie, fiscal year easement acceptances?
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to talk about a package of seven easements that are all tied to the Lowell Light and Power 2026 capital budget. Just like the city, we operate on a fiscal year from July to June, so all these projects will take place latter half, or the rest of this year and the first half of next year. But included in the council packet is a copy of all seven easements. And there's also some additional maps that provide a little additional context of where the projects are located. These are associated with two main projects. One of them is a voltage conversion project, or basically a project to upgrade some older infrastructure along West Main Street here. One of the nice things about this project is when we're complete, we're going to be coming off of Bowes Road and then off of some of the other streets, we're going to be able to remove all the infrastructure from railroad tracks all the way to Valley Vista. There's an old pole line running on the south side of Main Street there. It will, go ahead and preface that we've got to wait for Comcast to get off of those poles, which is our timeline. But the end goal is to get all that infrastructure removed. It'll be a fairly major system upgrade through there. The other project is in the Alden Nash G-Drive area. That area is currently fed from four different overhead feeds that go through a lot of trees. It's been identified as an area where we, with substandard reliability, which detracts from our ability to invest or dedicate time elsewhere. Happy to answer any questions. The Lowell Light and Power Board did review these easements at our November board meeting, and the Lowell Light and Power Board did accept them and formally recommended that the city council accept easements so we can progress with these projects. I did work with Jessica, the city attorney, on this, and a team that she brought together. So, these have all been reviewed and compiled by attorneys far more knowledgeable about easements than I. Happy to answer any questions, but the request is to approve the resolution included in the board packet that would accept the easements and direct or authorize the mayor to execute them on the city's behalf.
Any other questions for Charlie?
Yeah, I got one, Charlie.
All right.
The trees we taken out. How many trees are going to be removed?
None.
Okay. That was my one question, because when I looked at the Legends map, it was like...
Yeah, no, this is all, it's all overhead infrastructure now, and we're basically converting everything to underground in those same areas. So, we've got a pouring contractor that's going to come in and install pipe under the ground so we can pull our wire in. But the goal is to not go back and have to trim these trees. They've been, there's some challenging areas there. And then I guess just another commentary. One of the things that, why these easements are necessary is anytime we put infrastructure on private property that ultimately serves multiple parcels, we want to ensure that that infrastructure, nobody can come in after the fact and tell us to remove it, or say that there's an issue with it. We've had some challenges in the past with infrastructure that's been, you know, critical to our operation. So, all of these are either serving multiple parcels or are part of a project to serve multiple parcels.
Charlie, even though you're putting these underground, it's still not a cure-all that you'll never have a power outage, but you're going to eliminate a lot of the calls you do have for outages when you do have them up in that area because of them.
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the things. We track outage causes for every outage. We look at locations. A lot of discussion goes into, you know, overhead versus underground. We try to take everything we can underground. It's definitely quite a bit more expensive to initially put it in underground. It does not eliminate the potential for outages. We hope that when there are outages, it's caused on an overhead portion of the line that ultimately is necessary to feed up to that, because unfortunately, when underground cable does go bad, it's just a longer fix. It just doesn't happen as often. So, definitely not a guarantee that there won't be an outage, but it's definitely a step in the right direction to proactively prevent future outages.
Anything else? All right, then I'll look for a motion for Resolution 20-25 for the project easements.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Amy?
Councilmember Salasweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ritzma is absent. Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
Thanks, Charlie. Eric, the amendment to the LARA agreement, Resolution 2125.
When the LARA group formed 21 years ago, Perry and Dave Austin and some other people got together like-minded and wanting to establish trails. They established this nonprofit by using some seed money from the Soul Mobile Club that had closed and donated $10,000 to the purpose. When they wrote the bylaws, they included a term limit of the members of four and a half years. I'm not quite sure why. I don't know if Perry even knows why. But that term limit really has no purpose, and there have been Perry and others, Dave have served without voluntary basis for those 21 years. And this resolution is just removing that term limit so that the board members can attend as long as they have interest.
Eric, I like it because we've always struggled to find people for these boards, and LARA is not a short-term war. It's a big, long project. So, I'm grateful for the people actually that stay past their term limits. Does anybody have any questions for Eric?
All right, then I will look for a motion for Resolution 2125, eliminating term limits for the LARA board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Any other discussion?
Amy?
Councilmember Barkis?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Ritzma is absent. Mayor DeVore?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salasweedle?
Yes.
All right, easy enough. Eric, Board of Commission report?
I have nothing new from two weeks ago.
Jim?
Oh, Lowell Light and Power, Matt, and one of the things was Mark Rogues, is that how you pronounce his name? Celebrated 26 years with Lowell Light and Power. We did have a long conversation about what could be the potential electrical rates in 2026. It's not out there that I'm wearing public yet, so I'm not going to say what those potential rates could be, but we'll let, is it out there?
Yeah, it's all public. It's all public information.
Yeah, I wasn't sure when it was going to be out there, so I feel like I should say it, and I said it, so I haven't seen it.
Better than others, that's our rate.
It's very affordable. It'd be a slight increase, but I think we'll be able to handle that. And that's all I got.
All right.
Planning Commission, our chair and our vice chair were not there, so Mike started, and Colin Plank ran the thing. Jim was there. Eric, I did explain that what we had talked about, so they were good with that, right? We discussed maybe going to, not allowing smaller lots, but allowing larger lots possibly, and taking the setback from three feet back, making it like a seven-foot setback on the PUDs so that we're more in line with a house or a garage or an hour shed. And we discussed it. We didn't vote on it, but that was talked about.
I think Colin did a great job of letting me be.
He was smart.
Did a great job.
Yes, I think so too.
All right. I don't have anything either from the last two weeks, so how about a city manager report?
Sure. First, I want to congratulate Jim, Mark, and Burl on the election on two Tuesdays ago. Marty, I'm sorry. Sorry you didn't win, but I've always enjoyed working with you. I'll continue to work with you. We've become friends through the years I've been here, and...
I would dare say lifelong.
I would hope we're lifelong friends regardless.
No one loves coming into my store.
Yeah, no one loves the store, so yeah. Even though he's, he might be falling asleep actually, so. So, but yeah, I've always enjoyed working with you, Marty, and I'm sure we'll continue moving along. So, I do want to address some items with Covenant Park. So, last Monday, Franklin Partners submitted a request to the Lowell Township Planning Commission to add data centers as an allowable use within the existing light industrial zoning for that location. So, a couple items of note. First and foremost, all the zoning and planning decisions for that development fall under jurisdiction of Lowell Township and is solely under their jurisdiction. As you're aware, they are reviewing the matter. The property has been planned for light industrial use for more than 30 years. So, the zoning usage hasn't changed. No end user has been announced, and as of right now, if there is a transaction, it's private because it's between the property owner and the commercial entity, then it remains private. So, until, if there's a sale that happens, then obviously more information will come out because a lot of that is between them. It's not something the city's privy to. That being said, we have received assurances from Citizens Energy that this project will not impact rates as the costs will be paid for by an end user, and it will not diminish the power supply. So, Consumers has told us that. Also, based on the information that the city has so far, the project will not strain the offer. Newer data centers have cooling technology that makes the anticipated water usage basically equivalent to a residential development per day. The water usage is, I've heard of the stories of the excessive water usage, and every indication we've received here is that's not the case. Also, the early projections indicate this project could generate anywhere between one to six times the city's current taxable value. The current taxable value for the city is about $175 million. So, this location, there's never been a project this big, if it were to come. The first priority for the new tax revenue will be the required expansion of the water treatment and upgrades to the wastewater treatment, reducing or eliminating that burden on the current ratepayers. We have to upgrade those facilities no matter what. And we're doing everything we can to try and reduce or eliminate that cost on the ratepayers, if we can. So, that is something that we're really trying to do. Also, as you recall, The Right Place, they have had community forums with the city and the township. We had one about a year and a half ago. We had one about a year ago where we provided all the information we've had. At that point, we plan on having one here in the very near future. The Right Place is currently working on that, so we're trying to get all the information out. I understand it's a very, I understand people don't understand why we're not talking. And frankly, until things are finalized, there's not a lot of information to give. Everything we would give is speculative at this point, so we're very cautious of that. But as this project evolves, we do intend to be as transparent as we can with this process, and we'll continue to be. Also, so other things I'm working on, something else I've done, I've combined the water and sewer rate information for as many Michigan communities as possible. I did this two years ago for a bunch of managers throughout the state because the city of Lowell is not the only city municipality being impacted by rate increases. Multiple communities are having rate hikes all over the state. It's really, in my opinion, becoming a problem because of the fact the matter is, when all this infrastructure was built 60, 70, 80 years ago, the majority of the costs were paid for by the state and federal government. That doesn't happen no more. And so, those costs are becoming a burden of the ratepayers, and you're seeing more and more of that. And the problem is with this aging infrastructure, it has to be fixed. And so, we're not the only city that this is facing. I just heard of a city that literally has not raised their water ready-to-surface fee since 1975. And they just had to do a major hike because they had made investments that had to be paid for. And there's, if you're not properly funding your systems, that's when you have the major, major hikes. And so, it's imperative to do that. But also, there's many different systems, many different ways to do it. If you see that the people in the Grand Wackit system pay less than we do, well, yeah, I'm not going to dispute they don't. The other thing you have to look at is population, number of ratepayers, types of treatment facilities. We have a, for a very small community, we have a very highly technical water and wastewater treatment system, and they cost money. And if you go to some other communities around here, you may see that their water sewer rates are not nearly as high. And I will argue that the major reason is, is they have limited treatment facilities that aren't as costly to run, and that plays a major role in your rate costs. And years ago, when, I don't know if you've heard the story, but the reason the water plant was termed into a line softening plant is because I believe somebody came to a city council meeting about 50 years ago and showed a jar of water that was red. And that was what caused the upgrades to the plant. And that's a very costly treatment, and it, I don't think we want our water to decline because of that. So, but I'm working on that as well. Last Monday, Councilman Salasweedle, Councilman Barkis, Councilwoman Lett Barkis, and other members of the DDA and Chamber of Commerce toured downtown Alleghen Riverwalk. We are looking at possibly making some improvements to the Riverwalk. It's, in my opinion, it's probably time for some improvements to it. So, we're, the DDA is going to probably start working on that here in the next, hopefully in the next year, start planning for that. Also, last week, we had a meeting with the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission and the Kent County Road Commission to discuss the 2027 allotment for the city of Lowell through the Small Urban Program that's Money for Roads. We did submit our 2728 project, which includes Hunt Street, Hudson, from Hudson to the west dead end of the trail, Birchwood Court, and Beach Drive. This package is expected to be funded, as we can submit projects every two years. Eligible funding for this will be $420,000 with an estimated $100,000 local match. Currently, the estimated project cost is approximately $930,000. So, we would get close to half of that funded, so that's what's going on. That's all I have.
Questions, comments, concerns?
That jar that Mike was talking about is at the water plant.
Still red?
Yeah, it's still red. It hasn't settled out yet. So, we came a long way since red water.
I have a question regarding the 425. I don't know if now's the time to ask. So, a year or so ago, at the first meeting with the township, we reviewed the 425. And I took exception to the line in that that said that the expansions would be paid for by the ratepayers. And we discussed that. We discussed that. That's the one thing in that that I didn't like, I still don't like. You've just said now that, can you explain now the increased revenue will be used to pay for the plant expansions? Can you clarify that?
Sure. The intent is, this tax revenue, and there's, we haven't finalized how we're going to finance it because there's still a number of moving parts that have to be terminated. But the intent is, is since it's capital improvements, we are looking at utilizing the revenue first for that. Now, normally, I would say your water, you should be funding all improvements to the system through water and sewer rates. In most traditional cases, you can. We believe that, based on how this is set up, for the amount of revenue we can generate, we believe this is the wise use of the funds for the capital improvements. I wouldn't want to just put it into the rates. I would want to tie it to a capital project. And so, that is what we've been working on, I would say, probably for over a year. Once we learned, we learned through this process that we think there's a way we can do it. We obviously listened to people. They didn't want the burden put on them, which I understand. So, we really tried to, all of the things that we heard even a year ago regarding traffic, all the ratepayers and so forth, we tried to take that information into account and tried to help us, guide us as we're going through this process. So, that's the intent at this time. Now, there's still a number of moving parts. I can't tell you exactly how the final piece is going to be yet because we haven't, we're working on it, but we're not there. We're close, but we're not there yet. But that is the intent.
That's great. Again, that was the one thing that I did not like, so that's good. I'm going to continue to keep an open mind. I think this could be huge for the city, as we all said, and so that's great. Do you have any idea when the water and sewer agreements might be coming to the council?
Sure. I will tell you that I believe the water and sewer account will be, once we have a final, once we have a final decision as to if something happens out at the property, we should hopefully know very soon. If we don't, then we're going to have to go into another direction. If it doesn't pan out, we will have to go into another direction. So, there's a number of different scenarios that could happen. But the water and sewer agreement will not be final. But the water and sewer agreement will not be final. We have a lot of it, we have a lot of it done. And we, and, and the city, in my opinion, has got some concessions that we wouldn't have gotten before. But there's, it's not final yet and I don't like talking about things until they're final. And it should, what happens there is going to dictate that. So, but I hope very soon.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else for Mike? All right. Well, looking through here, it just struck me that I skipped over an agenda item, public comment. So now we'll do public comment for whatever you guys want to talk about.
Perry Beecham, reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Obviously this weekend, Christmas through Lowell seemed to be a great success. I also want to say to Rich, I think it was Saturday night, I was coming back into town from hunting and here was the DPW guys out working, emptying trash and everything Saturday night. And I just want to say thank you. It, it's, it's just a great thing. The one thing I will say is it was difficult to see pedestrians and everything in the walkways. And I certainly would like to see, I don't know, the city, the chamber, whatever, but have some, you know, I would like to see something permanent to light up those crosswalks, at least some of them. I mean, you had the fluorescent green cones, even those were hard to, hard to see. And, and tonight's on the, the news was interesting because they were talking, because a woman got pedestrian and Grand Rapids got hit with her stroller with an infant in it. And they were shooting out some of their statistics, the month of October and November, from 3 o'clock to 9 o'clock was like 20% of all pedestrian accidents happened in that timeframe, the month of October. Saying it's, you know, you've got the changes in the, in the daylight savings time and it's darker and everything. But it was a, it was a great, a great event. Just like to see those crosswalks somehow lit up a little bit more. And then lastly, it was great to hear Mike, you talking about some of the things of the covenant and that you listen to everybody. It's, it's just hard when you don't hear those things and don't know what's going on for over, you know, for over a year. And, but I'm glad to hear some of the things that you're moving forward with. And again, I would just say, you know, as Eric talked about, I would just encourage the city and the rate payers. It can be, could be a great thing, but I just, I believe that no subsidies should be burdened, that the rate payers and the citizens shouldn't be providing subsidies to the developer. So, thank you.
Thanks, Perry.
I'm Liz Sparks at 257 Donner Drive. And I'd like to address my concerns about the surprise announcement of the data warehouse going in at the Covenant Park. My first and foremost concern is the astronomical amount of water it will take to cool one of those data warehouses. And I know you addressed that, Mike, but I've done a little research and it says it takes millions of gallons of water. And depending on the kind of cooling system they have, depends on how much water it will take to cool that. And is this sustainable along with the already huge demand for the park itself? And how is this going to impact the city's water supply in the near future and in 50 years from now? Are we going to be able to pump that much water for years? And also, how is this going to impact our water rates? You're saying that hopefully it's not going to? I hope it doesn't. And I hope that the city and the township planning committees do their due diligence in regards to the impact that this will have on both of our communities. I have signed up to receive emails on the updates of the covenant process, but I would also like to see maybe a monthly report given at the city council meetings about the progress of the Covenant Park because it has been very long time since anybody has heard anything about this. This is a huge deal for both the city and the township, and I believe the residents deserve to be kept informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rachel Groves and I am from Portland, Michigan, Southern 434, June of Berlin. And I am here tonight to introduce myself. I am running for the 78th District House of Representatives, which includes Kent, Ionia, Berry and Eaton County. So the little bit of Kent County that I have would be the good people here in Lowell, mostly the city of Lowell and then south. So it kind of runs all the way from Lowell to Portland and then down to Hastings and over to Nashville and then up to Ionia and Saranac. So I just wanted to introduce myself. You can find me at my website, votegroves.com. And you can find me on all the socia's at VoteGroves, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok. And this first part of my campaign, I definitely want to be visiting all the cities and the townships and, and seeing what you have going on and get to know the people of the 78th District better and what concerns our community. And I'm very happy to hear tonight that the couple of people that did stand up to speak, you know, it sounds like it's a very thoughtful community and I've always really liked Lowell and concerned about the citizens, concerned about what's going in and staying educated. And I think that's so important. This is a value-based campaign and I decided to run because I think that we have more in common than we all realize. I think our values are all the same. Sometimes we may have a different way of getting there, but I would like to be someone who bridges those values and the people together. And I've been a nurse, a little bit about me, so this first year is going to be learning a lot about you guys and, and when I'm visiting all, all of you around the 78th District. But a real quick minute, or quick second here, I'm a mother of four, a nurse for almost 30 years and that is my passion. Now that my kids are all grown, but nursing has always been my passion. I really care for people. I really am interested to hear about their lives and what, what, you know, makes people, what they're concerned about and hear what they have to say. And a huge advocate for others. And I would be so honored if you were to support me in any way, shape or form during this process. Fall of 26, of course, November is when we will be voting. And I would be honored to represent the 78th District. So I have some brochures here tonight, Rachel Groves from Portland. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't you comments? Eric?
Yes, first of all, I want to mention Christmas through Lowell was just phenomenal. It was our small business, it was our best, the best year in the last 10 years that we've been in business. So thank you for the local people that came out in Groves. A bunch of out-of-towners were there also and they were certainly active and we, we kept really busy. So thank you for supporting small business. It really does help. It really is important for us to keep our town going. So thank you for that. I want to recognize the police department. I've noticed the number of stops and the citations have been increasing, so thank you for that. I live and work 30 feet from Main Street, so I see how busy our road is, especially in the summertime. But, but having 81 stops and 15 citations and 18 citations of September, thank you for, you know, making the law, the law. We appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone for speaking, Perry and Rachel and Liz, thank you for your comments. And we will work on these things and write them down and we will not, not forget them. So thank you. And also, Row again, really, again, appreciate you being here. That's, that's very nice and look forward to years together. Thank you.
I was out of town, town this weekend thinking I would get away from the rat race, but sitting in the lovely confines of Red We Field in the sun at 76 degrees watching the Michigan River Western game, I did get a phone call that said that the trash was piling up. I told him I would make a phone call and see what I could do. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a hold of anybody, but I got a call back about two hours later thanking me for whatever I had done because the DPW was out there taking care of the trash pile up. So that was my weekend. So I hope everybody had success this weekend.
You kissed a credit for it, no, whatever.
You know me.
Yeah.
Christmas through Lowell, I would like to submit a bill to the city for my water use because my bathroom never stopped being used. I know at one point, Light Power had talked about possibly utilizing some space over there to put a public restroom. After this weekend, it is sorely needed. We had stores not allowing people to use their restroom and they would come into mine. Jody was in my store and knows exactly what I'm talking about. We filled up and we were just slammed. In fact, Jody had just kind of died and I waved, but I had to keep moving. The, the lights, Perry, I think Lowell Light Power has the perfect solution to it. You have currently street lamps that are adjustable, correct? You can tone them down or you can turn them up, the new LED ones.
I do not believe that is the case for the lights downtown, but I do not.
No, I'm talking about the new ones that you're replacing the old street lights with, like in our neighborhood and other places. Your house is a good example.
You're?
I think putting two there, one on each side, lights our walkways up, right? And it just, it helps. I don't know what that cost is. I don't know what that looks like. There's poles right there. I don't see why that can't be utilized. Even if the city has to pick the tab up for it, it's still a great thing and it keeps people that come to our towns safe. And to me, that's the simplest solution. The other thing, I'd like to thank everybody that turned out to vote. Yep, I didn't do it, but my wife is extremely happy now. She sat down and she figured it out. She goes, do you realize you get 90 hours of vacation time back a year? I'm like, I do? And she's like, yeah. Well, I already booked us a couple trips, one's down to the Navy Pier and some other places, right? I am truly going to miss sitting up here and help drive our city. I truly believe when I sat right where you are and Mike asked me, do you want to do this? Because we had an empty seat and I said, yes. Perry asked me, are you sure you want to get out of the fryer and into the frying pan? And I said, sure, it can't be that bad. We've had ups, downs, lefts and rights. The people that got voted in will do an extremely good job. Burl will be a phenomenal individual. And I have no regrets. I'm actually looking forward to be able to spend more time with my grandchildren, my wife and my own children and camping more. Lowell's First Look, that's not here tonight, made a comment to me once about, geez, you miss a lot of time. I didn't realize family wasn't important. And I believe your family should come before everything else. You people are all my family, but my true blood family is by far the greatest gift I could ever have. So thank you, congratulations. Will you please tell your wife? I did end the parking lot the other day, but.
You did.
Make sure you emphasize that I am, I am glad she did it. And with that being said, when we interviewed to replace Leah, Burl would have gotten the position, but Burl had one little chip in her armor and Mark got it and she didn't. And before we all left that day, I said, I hope everybody that showed up to interview, to take this seat, I hope you run. And Burl did. Burl was the only one to do it.
Mark technically, yeah.
Yeah.
She was the only one, I was going to say that too.
Yep. So congratulations to all. I'll miss you, but y'all know where I'm at. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to do everything I've done. I will still maintain the dinner I do for Lowell Light Power. I will still do the breakfast I do for the DPW people. I'm still going to be involved with our city. And this coming year, I secured financing for our police department. We're going to do honey baked box lunches for them during police week. So I've secured all that funding and that's it.
All right. I had some stuff today, but Perry stole one of them and you just stole the other one. So a little annoyed by that, but he's 100% correct. I did, I was back and forth to high school hockey six or seven times this weekend. And even when it was light out with the amount of cars on both sides, it's hard to tell where people are going to pop out from. That's if they're using the crosswalks, it's hard. It's harder when they pop out from these cars that are not in the crosswalk. But at night especially, I was, I know it's an M-Dom road and I know there's hoops and jump ropes and all this stuff, but even, I've seen them in, I guess it's Ionia where they do that downtown market, they're tempered. They stand up and they have the little pedestrian crossing and they just flash around the edges and they're on a pole. You take them down, put them in a barn, pull them back out. And maybe taking a look at, some of these really badly need to be retained. This one out here especially, it's, you can see it if you're right on top of it, but I'm glad that we had that problem. I'll say that because that means people are here doing stuff, but we got to make it safe for them to do stuff or they'll quit. I was going to say the same thing you did about Burl and about the election as a whole. I really, really enjoy having four candidates that are so good you have to pick, you got to actually think about who you're going to vote for. I vote for myself, no brainer, big fan. But, and there was no way we could have got it wrong. And I was just at the Mayor and President Institute in Bay City this weekend, for this, earlier this week. Having four good candidates is not a problem a lot of communities have. They're having trouble finding one or two good candidates for seven or eight or nine member boards. So if you needed any more reassurance that this is a pretty great place to live, there it is for you. There was also a couple of really good breakout sessions on updates to the Open Meetings Act, Roberts Rules, Ethics. And then it's just nice to get with other communities and see that a lot of these problems are not just Lowell problems.